This portion of the floor show is primarily a board discussion. And that means that the public input session is over. Before we begin this phase, we both just want to acknowledge that this is a very difficult process for everybody involved. For our students, for our parents, for the community members, for our staff and teachers, our administrators, our board. None of this is easy. So, please know that as we're all going through this and all the hard things that have come forward and that we are continuing to discuss, we care about the students, we care about Noel. We want the best for everybody. And we also have that challenge of the responsibility to look at keeping the best programs and what we can do. And that's that with knowing the information that we have about the finances and how hard things are. And so, when we move ahead, this is the process that the board always goes through. We just typically don't have this much of an audience. So, what happens is we present a budget to the board and the board works on that budget. And at that time, they can, there are questions that come forward. There are, could you provide more information for us? And that's the phase that we're in right now. We're in the phase where we've made some recommendations, administrative recommendations, they've been accepted. We'll go through some of that. We also have some other administrative recommendations that we will go through again because we needed to have some time and have some questions on that. And then there are some other along list that has been generated for more documentation and input. So that's not representative of our whole board. Those are questions that just come up. And we respect the process of needing to go through everything to do our due diligence. And so, we very much appreciate all the feedback that we've had over time, everybody has taken. And as I've said, this next step of this process when we're going through the information is very, very difficult. And like, I just can't emphasize that enough. It's difficult for all of us involved. And that's what I'll say.
So I'm just gonna add a little bit in terms of, we've been, both of us, I've been here a really long time and we can look at this district as, you know, we've been building it for a bunch of years. Taking things apart is not what we want to do. But, we do every single year have to look carefully at the things that are, like, that the student needs that come up and the way that things go forward and how do you balance that out. So, none of this, as I said, is easy. But, we're gonna take some time right now and we're gonna talk quickly about the strategic plan. Because remember, we all got together, there was a whole group of people that worked strongly on, like, what are the goals? Those are down front of anybody who didn't get one last one. And then we're gonna talk a little bit just in terms of where we sit in the county with the spending that we have and recognize honestly how we really do a good job with the amount of funds that we have providing good education. But, there's some comparisons that are made that are not necessarily equal, right? So, we're gonna talk about that. There's another hand up, just with a graph on it that was beginning at the beginning. So just, if you look at the strategic plan, we finished this up in the spring, over the summer of 23. I presented it to the board again and to make sure it was adopted in the fall of 23. And there are four goals. And thank you, Estacio, for being the best putter together of information so that it looks clean and happy. But our goals were specifically around community engagement, providing high-quality resources, providing school safety, and providing pathways to success, which includes high academics and as well as the capital pathway opportunities. Those are the, that's what this committee, this group, this community group felt were the places where we need to go for our students and our district, our community, to raise up the best next citizens that we could for the 22nd century, right? I mean, we're looking further along. So, in that, I just wanted to, I just want you guys to take some time to review it again and I want our board to look at it again and make sure that when we are, and as we do this, we look forward and we say, okay, are we committing to the strategic plan for this district as we're looking at our budget and working through those things? Are we having to balance? How can we strong, you know, how can we financially provide services and meet the needs of our kids but also work with our taxpayers? That's probably been said a lot more in this year than I've ever had the pleasure of dealing with it in the 23 years, I guess, I've been in this role, which is a ridiculous amount of time, by the way. This has been probably the most sort of contentious. And I don't mean that in a way that is, that it sounds like, but I've not seen the level of sort of discomfort that we've had regarding the idea of the constituent piece. That's new for us, honestly. It really truly is new that the school board has had to really kind of rethink their, where they think. And so, I'm just, I'm asking you as a board and as our members of the audience just to be listening, for us to really be thinking about that, about what's first for us. And it is, in my opinion, our strategic plan is about our kids and about our future. So, that is one of the biggest pieces that I want for us to always consider as we go forward. And I want the audience to know that even as we're doing that, we're also trying to be physically responsible. It's not simple. If you take out the other piece, there's a graph that has, and honestly, I stole this. This is kind of fun, right? I just take it from others. MSBD 35 actually put this together, but it, well, they took this information and it's about student spending from 2018, 1984, down there. Just one? Okay. Do you see this one? Okay. Again, guys, this is in the front. We made enough for everybody. There you go. By the way, I counted, I think I did a pretty good job. We had like 222 people here tonight. That is me and I like. So, the graph you have in front of you is what's put together and it's based on the school that contains the State Regional Technical Center. So these are the students that, these are the schools that are in York County, basically, and never mind. If you look at this graph, we are the maroon line at the bottom. And you can see over the years from 2018 and it's close to the end of 2023 because 2024 spending is not properly implemented. You know, it's not by law. It shows where Noel stands. We are below the state average, fairly significantly below the state average. We are the second lowest spender in the county on our students. Of the very top line is York. We don't compare New York in any way, shape, or form, for size and financial ability because they just have a different tax base than we do. That's just reality. What we do have in here is a couple of, a few schools that are not, like, right around us. But Massapese, we are often comparing to Massapese, to Sandberg, to, well, there's typically, we're also comparing to like MSBD 56, which is Montego because of the consolidated works. But this is just straightforward that New York County schools. So, when we share this information, we should share it with our public because we do provide a lot for a lot, comparatively speaking. So take this and share it with everybody you know. When you stand in the middle, let them have it. Because it truly is. The only school actually that's gone down is in MSBD 57 and not really is, currently, they are working hard to get back into the range that is necessary for them. So I just want people to understand that there is some true disparity in our counties and we do a lot with what people are, what our people are able to give to us. Again, and this is per people's spending. It takes out debt service and it takes out transportation. So, just food for thought as we talk about the budget ahead of us.
Sure. I'm sorry, I guess make sure I speak into the mic. So, we acknowledge that transportation for our district is a lot. Like, we are a very large district. We are, are we in the top five as far as transportation in the state?
I think we are in terms of miles traveled.
Yeah, so that's a significant part of our budget.
Yeah, 57 is similar.
Yeah. And then the other thing, I was just asking as far as, do we know if, because grant monies are a big part, do we know grant monies were included in this or is it just strictly tax funded?
Tax funded.
Okay. Thank you for the question.
All right. Okay. So here we go. So what's going on, is being passed out right now with the budget considerations, decision sheet.
And I'm sorry, we have, we don't have copies for everyone. Not the.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question? Can we explain a little bit what that sheet is?
Yeah, I'm going to. We're just gonna stick it in first.
Thank you.
Yeah, for sure. So this sheet is a running document of questions of different expenses and revenue that we have gone through or that we will be reviewing this evening. And this is, this is the part that the board typically works on as far as once there is a budget presented by the board, by the school, the board takes it. This is the place for questions and looking for further information. In addition, it lists, it also lists, if you don't have a copy of that, there were some. It lists some recommendations from the district, from the school administration, district administration. And then on the back of that were things that were brought up last week to get further information on. So to clarify that, those pieces of information that were brought forward last week were just topics that the board wished to collect or board members wished to collect information on. So it wasn't the whole board acting on anything. Rather, it was, could we have more information? Would we be able to see this? This is part of the process, is to collect the information, to go through it and work through piece by piece, information by information. So that's what this document is, is right now in front of us. Who's that?
Just, could you explain how it was collected on the email stuff? Just so that they know it's a company or person's question?
Yep, so this is a Google Doc. And what that means is that the board has a shared document and can write down questions, can write down topics that they wish to talk about. So that was what the source of this list is, came up from the previous week. And that is what we will be discussing this week. So it's a running document where the board is able to write down questions. We can answer the questions. We can also provide written documentation.
Thank you.
Okay. So if we look at the top of this, we have already agreed upon increases and decreases. So as we go through that, we have the reduction in workers' compensation expenses, remove unfilled bus driver positions, remove technology application reading plus, add faculty student capacity study. So I will talk a little bit about that because that is not a decrease. But that is something that we had talked about that came up as part of looking at the space and longevity of London Elementary School. And at our previous board meeting, the board discussed putting money into that study, which is gonna, could take six months, eight months. But what that will do is give us a really good picture of the entire district so that when we're looking at K5, 6, 7, 8, 12, and eventual addition of preschool, we'll have really good laid-out information. So when we have to make shifts, which we know we will have to, we can make very thoughtful shifts and not have to keep disrupting student transitions while we try to catch up. So it's really giving us a big overview of that.
And just a quick clarification, it's add facility of student capacity, not that.
Sorry. Yeah, thank you. So for revenue, we have efficiency main. We have main care billing, which we previously discussed, and the tri-town locomobile. So as we look at all of that, that goes to, if you see those totals, that comes up to 692, 605, which is revised increase to taxpayers. And that would be 10.64% from the current 14.07%. So that was all we discussed and moved forward to reflect in the next phase of the budget draft. This next section, we started and began to discuss some of these pieces, but we did not yet have a straw poll on all of them. So we're going to go through them right now. We do have a green card. Per suggestion, it'd be easier to just hold up a green card. So, the most efficient manner to get through this is to do the straw, to have a straw poll, to see if there's more, there are some things on here we have more information to share with you. And then we will ask for further questions. If there's no further questions, we'll take it for the straw poll.
Can we remind them that our straw poll is not mine? Great, as well.
Can you speak into the mic, Jerry?
I'm trying.
Just, please.
I didn't want to use the mic.
You're far away, I can't hear you if you're not in that mic.
Okay. I'll try and speak loud. The study expense. So the one that we've done, when you were looking at expense, schools cannot be used, reused for the same thing? We needed a new study?
The study that was done with the buildings.
Yeah, we didn't really give a study. Did all the additional.
Yes, there wasn't an official updated study prior to the planning of the, and the increase of schools.
I think the reality of this is that.
Well, the architects came in, did they quite teach school or made their recommendations, but it wasn't official.
Well, it was, it was an expansion project across the board as opposed to looking at the district and saying, how can we reconfigure without additional buildings, like, in the three-tenths, in the three-tenths? So it was a broader construction project versus a, let's look at what we can do and shift some things around.
Okay. And then I have one other question. The locomobile hasn't that been defunded for a couple of years?
It has been.
Yes, it has been.
Has it continued to be on the budget then? Has it been in the budget?
We had planned to, we had hoped to use this money to purchase another vehicle to continue with the locomobile. We were unable to do so. So now we're using this as an opportunity to take that money to offset.
To this point, it's a total elimination.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have the removal of parking lot B paving. Again, these are administrative recommendations. This is $108,850. There was a question about gravel, finding out the feasibility and the price of using gravel for this versus what we've been using for asphalt. He is. All right, Kevin. Wake up, Kevin. Mr. Wayne, so we're patiently in.
Oh, no. What'd you do?
You gotta explain that first, Kevin.
What's that?
What you're holding in your right hand.
Uh, I had a meeting with Sue and Audrey. Can you help me real quick?
His right hand.
Yes. Yeah, so, real quick, this is a follow-up to the request made by before that in my budget presentation. As far as was there an alternative to resurfacing the B parking lot? And the example was made, is it possible to do what the town of Leonard did on Seminole, which was a type of resurface by a lower cost and less expensive? However, I've sent out some photos to you that I'll kind of forward you when we can, when I get to that. But, the alternative to what Leonard did to our Seminole, yes, it is a possibility. However, the drawbacks to it is the process that they use requires to have that process repeated every seven to 10 years. And also along with that, this documentation I did too as well, that also it can be damaged, the type of material, not material, but the process they use that is which is snow removal and ice removal can damage that type of resurfacing that they did. So it's like the photos that I showed you are Seminole itself. So if you see, like, I'm not sure exactly what order it went in, but the first one, I think, has a big section where you can see where it's been left. Again, this process was done only seven months ago on Seminole. So, I'm not, I'm not willing to put the district's expense to trying something experiment here that I just gave you the information on that's not currently feasible already in seven months. So, there's many more photos I took, but I always sent you four that gave you an idea of, you know, what I'm talking about. So that's kind of where we are with that. Yes, it is an option, but it's not in the district's best interest only because of the seven to 10-year timeframe and also damage from snow removal. And I certainly don't want to be up here buying what up here, watching big, tons of resurfacing material, plow up there, go, ooh, that's my, that'd be a good explanation and so forth. So, again, our product launch range is very good shape, but it's also, remember that their original pavement is only 24 years old. So they come up very, very well in discussions with Denise Sue and Audrey. I have no problem if we have to push this back another year. And the reason I say that is because I think there are other possibilities where I would like to, let me back up. We put this into this year's budget because we actually started repaving projects last year at the high school. This was the last school that we had in the district. We did all the other buildings in past five to seven, eight years. So this was the last one that actually needed to start resurfacing. And again, the ideal thing would be able to do them all at once, do the entire facility at once. But knowing that it's tight without a budget and what it costs to do these parking lots, because they are the exact parking lots, is that it's, you couldn't do the whole facility in one general budget. So, we stopped the process last year, started doing resurfacing and was trying to get on a five to six-year plan. So in six years, we'd have this, the facility completely resurfaced parking lots only. That's not addressing the vacant access roads. So apparently, that's kind of where we are in a nutshell. So yes, any questions, it can be done, but it's not the best solution.
Another question, if you don't mind. Where are responsible for the access roads as well?
Correct. It's, we're responsible for the access road, but they outran away from the town of Northburg to come from Route 9 to Richards.
And Kevin, just thinking about the phases, it's gonna take six years to pave, so we're gonna be out seven years before we complete this complex. And you're comfortable in saying that our asphalt's gonna last that phase?
I'm very comfortable saying that. Again, we're back to the question. I'd like to stay on that cycle as far as continuing to do it and not stopping the project and then putting on the back rubber and then picking up two, three years from now. I think that there are other options that can be explored, such as point packages. We can do the whole entire facility all at once and finance it over a period of time. So it's like, but it's important to understand that it is 23, 24 years old. So it's all up very, very well. But also it's going to get to where we either resurface or we hit the point where we have to reclaim and then you talk another cost.
Kevin, just for the access roads, now, like, there's two residences on the road. It's about, have we thought of going to the town and asking them to take that as a public road?
I don't think that really matters because you can have two private ways and they still are responsible to do. Once it becomes three dwellings on one, on the right of way, it would be a town, excuse me, it'd be a town responsibility then.
You're right. All right, you're perfect. When they build a road to a certain, that, you can approach the town and ask them to take it as a town road.
Right, and I think we do that here. Right, and I think the town of Northburg, don't worry, I can look into this, but I think it's two or less more. Excuse me, because the state situation, I live in the way I made my life. We have two dwellings on our private way, but the town doesn't maintain it. That's just, that's just the, what's the word? I'm sorry.
So the third one is the trigger?
The third one would be the trigger. Correct.
So there is three now though.
What's that?
There's two houses and a house, so I would consider that three plus the bus.
Uh, no, it's, it's two different things. You're talking residential and you're talking in this one.
All right, I think you have to look into that.
I can, I can be quiet about it. You mind?
So just clarifying this to be right. Sorry. You know, it takes a little while for this further, like, you know, gay thing. So I know you'll be here for a second. So, is it reasonably accurate to say that if we're not going to do it this year, that we, we're gonna be looking at as a board, looking at a bond? Is that, is that what you're saying or are you not saying?
I'm not, I'm saying it's a possibility. The ideal scenario, try to do it all at once at the same time. I believe it's all the same timeframe, it's all in the same lifespan. That'd be the ideal thing. Again, we're not gonna look at it as a budget. It's discussing, you know, options, ideas with these auditors too, you know, obviously, you people as well, to find out what bonds are out there that are bad. I mean, can we do that? I don't know. I'm just the one that brings this information to you and how we find answers, we put our answers.
Thank you.
You want?
Thank you.
You want it? Thank you.
So just a straw poll again. Are we in favor of this radical reduction in the budget?
Taking it out.
Taking it out of the budget? Yes, taking it out of the budget.
Yes, take it out?
Yes, take it out. Okay, thank you. So as we've talked through the budget, we've mentioned that we continually, every single day, every cost center is looking at their budget, analyzing their budget, looking at student enrollment, looking at schedules. student enrollment, looking at schedules, looking at a multitude of factors. We just don't put the budget away until Thursday nights, we're looking at it all the time. So in, with that said, and looking at the next item, it's a recommendation to remove one world language teacher in a high school. That's fifty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. Again, that is, that is new, that's good. And that's part of the process of continually, continually revisiting scheduling, revisiting enrollments. So that is the recommendation. Yes, yes.
So eliminated a position and it's not put in a position that we proposed?
No, it's eliminating a position.
Eliminating?
Yes.
So we cut down the size of one of our languages or?
So Principal Duport, do you want to come on forward? Thank you.
Thank you. No, absolutely. And obviously, I think it, you know, goes without saying, you've heard from numerous folks tonight, that these decisions are incredibly difficult, and I would put this absolutely in that bucket, you know? We have, we have seven world languages, seven world language teachers at Noble High School currently, so at five sections each, thirty-five sections, and over those thirty-five sections, we teach a total of twenty different courses. When you look at the levels of, from, in Spanish and French, from exploratory course taken by eighth graders all the way up to level five, and then we do also offer four section, four levels within Russian and Latin as well. So it's one of those pieces where, you know, you look at numbers as numbers, and it's like, yeah, this isn't hard, and then you start to realize and look at, okay, but when you get to French and Spanish five, when you get to certain opportunities for certain kids, the numbers don't necessarily say the whole story, but obviously, we are all faced with incredibly difficult decisions, so I would put this firmly in that bucket.
In the hard decision bucket?
Well, just as, you know, there's lots of difficult, you know, so we're all trying to help make this work the best we all can, you know?
Can you have a ballpark, what did the numbers in French five and?
Um, yeah, it differs a little bit, and our numbers are pretty high. We have a pretty robust biliteracy program, so students earn the seal of biliteracy through the state of Maine. So I would say, and you get it incorrect me here, I've got a couple of world language folks, but we have fifteen to twenty students each year that reach that level. So I want to say, like, you know, thinking ahead to next year, like, French and Spanish fours are about seventeen to twenty-two, something in that range, is that pretty accurate? You know, high teens, low twenties at the top, for sure. What was that?
They would lose that?
Not necessarily, no. We, I mean, we'd have to become incredibly creative, but we would not, we would not cut courses. I think what you would see is courses, sizes would get bigger, we'd have to be creative with some of our exploratory, because as folks know, or maybe don't know, eighth grade is the first stop with world language in our district, so the middle school is not able to offer world language, so eighth grade is that first place. So we'd have, we'd be incredibly creative. We are in other areas and would be. So, yeah, I don't want to say there's no impact to students, that's probably not truthful, but we would work to continue to still offer as robust of a program as we can.
What is that due to, like, intro level processes?
Yeah. Again, creativity dependent, you know, so our folks have been thinking about some, some possibilities that might be possible within that exploratory. I don't think, I don't believe numbers would be crazy, I think we'd still be in the twenty to twenty-four range for that exploratory. I, I think probably what would happen is there'd be some combination of some of the upper levels when we can, and really probably what would happen is some of the sections would get a lot larger at levels three and four, things like that, you know, where it's not quite, you know, obviously you have twenty-two students, I'm throwing out numbers in Spanish five, that's clearly one section, like, that's fairly easy. It's the twenty-eight Spanish threes for a year, like, ah, I don't want twenty-eight, you know, obviously two fourteen's, get those students ready to have the opportunity to earn maybe college credit in that world language, like, yes. You know, I think that's where it gets trickier. Wouldn't necessarily impact either end, the students who are new to the language and the students who are at the end, because those numbers become pretty easy relative to speak to, they're putting the courses.
Does anyone want further information on this topic?
Does the student department feel that they can handle that reduction and that they will still be able to provide quality instruction to students?
I mean, I would say honestly, probably not. I mean, it's going to be hard, like, it. Sorry, being honest, I wish it was easier, I'm sorry, I wish it was a clear, yes, everyone is on board, we can make this work, it'll be hard. But, yeah, sorry.
What level of language is required in high school?
Yeah, so we require every student in our building to have a graduation, to have an experience within world language. So we do allow some students, I would say it's a small number, under a third, that sort of stop at that introductory level within, within a grade level, so maybe fifty to sixty students only take the introductory level. But we are seeing, I think, for students to be able, to be accepted to a four-year school, generally it's a minimum of two years, and that wouldn't include the exploratory, so that would be a one and a two. And a lot of students, and we're really fortunate this year, we have some students, and I'm excited for you folks to see going to some really competitive places this year, and that'll be really cool, and now you're looking at that four to five, you know, four years, five years worth of that language, because we do allow, our eighth grade students coming in can take a French or Spanish one, level one, so that's what allows them to get to level five by the time they graduate.
So that's why it's that first year of eighth grade?
All of our eighth grade students have a world language experience, yes. And again, I say all, we may have a handful of students that due to special situations within their schedule, a program that they're in, they don't, but I would say absolutely by and large, every grade student is either in exploratory, which is a half-year opportunity, or the full year Spanish one, French one.
And what is the, I don't know if you have the numbers with you.
That's okay.
That, what is the average of kids, I mean, is it about fifty or sixty don't continue with it, is it the exploratory, like, what is the average that continues on in year after year with the average of students that we have?
Yeah, and so it, I guess I would say fifty out of the, I'm going to broadly use the number two fifty, we don't have two fifty in every class, but for ease of numbers, so under twenty percent stop at that level, and we get probably about ten percent, twenty, eighteen, you know, so in that ten percent range, go all the way to level five, I would say more typically stop at level two or three. The majority of our level four students continue to level five, it's one of those that you're like, almost there, so you might as well see about earning the college credit, getting those experiences, that seal of biliteracy, which is a pretty robust test. It makes sense to sort of finish that sequence at that point, if that makes sense.
You may earn a college credit for that.
They do, yep. Yep, it's a, it's a program through the state of Maine, so they are, they take those credits with them.
I went, a long time ago, I went to French four, and I, like, I think we had ten kids in our French four class, and the level, like, I don't remember the level of instruction required for that, to have like such large classes, what's, what's that going to do to the education of the kiddos involved in those where they could level four or five?
Yeah, and again, I think probably it's going to impact most, like, the twos and threes, ones, twos and threes. The exploratory numbers will stay similar, and those fours, again, most all of our students that take the level four, take the level five. So we have, I believe at this moment, eighteen or nineteen juniors predominantly in level four. We do have a few students who are in level three that are working to double up, they're going to do it over the summer, because it's, it's like one of those, you know, the way our system is, it's like a rite of passage to be able to get to the end of that sequence. So we do have some students who are level three as juniors who are going to double up to get to level five, so kind of the fours and fives say there won't be a big difference at that level, it's more the twos and threes.
Yeah, so that'd be my concern, is that we might discourage some students who go to level four or five, and that the twos and threes, that's not as robust.
Yeah, I mean, we hope not.
I hate to make a statement like this, but I, I think this country is lacking in students or employees that are bilingual, or, and in my industry, it's a real problem that we don't have, so I'd love to see a bigger focus on that. Thanks.
No, no problem. And again, I think, you know, in talking to our folks, our folks will make it work. I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to come out to the event that we had last week, it was still last week, with our, like, world language culture fair, and seeing the students up on stage, there were hundreds of students with posters set up, so it's, I mean, absolutely, when you say in our building, there's certainly that world language focus permeates, so I have no doubt that our people will do amazing things, because they're amazing people and they always do amazing things. So again, I, I know this is hard, we will make it work. Thank you, guys.
Any further questions or discussion? So a straw poll, and this is to remove one world language teacher in the high school. So that stays. The next one is to remove the school resource officer in Lebanon, and that is a recommendation based on the feedback that we have received from community members in Berwick and North Berwick. There has been concern about the fact that nobody, the people that we've spoken to, the feedback that we've received is this is a really, like, powerful, important piece. However, some of the responsibility that Berwick and North Berwick are feeling is that it needs to go to Lebanon, so the town of Lebanon needs to work with the school district to support a school resource officer in Lebanon, Lebanon Elementary and High School. So we want to talk a little bit about the.
Sure, so Tuesday night, we had fifty-two people, and there was, so Sheriff King came, Heather spoke, and I spoke as well, and we just talked about the whole piece. We had a lot of very positive public input from the Lebanon, there was a lot of Lebanon staff there, as well as a lot of Lebanon community members. Very good conversation, very supportive of the SRO piece, for sure. And so when we, we did the quick straw poll, or, you know, a little egg and chicken, and there were forty-seven people that voted, forty-five were, no, forty-one were in favor, and six were opposed, but this is, this is a tough one, like, this is a really tough one, and part of it is the, the piece that we currently don't have in our budget, in terms of, like, we're not, we're not providing that resource now. And there is a lot of, we did get some feedback, and we actually got some emails today from some folks who are supportive, yet feel, again, that Lebanon in terms of just need to look at their own law enforcement piece. So it's, it's a struggle, it's really a struggle. We, as a school community, I think feel strongly about SROs and feel like they are a huge asset. But as we're going forward, thinking about how to balance this budget a little bit, that's one of the things that we felt like we needed to put forward.
So are they going to look at their budget some different?
So I, it got a little, they were, the folks were well behaved in Lebanon, right? There wasn't any, there wasn't anything big, yeah, it was, it was, they were, they were good, and I just, I said clearly when we started the conversation, this is a school conversation about the school resource officers, if you have concerns about the law enforcement piece in Lebanon, and the nice thing was that several of the select folk were there, so we were able to say that's really a piece that needs to be addressed with that specifically. And so that was the whole, pretty much the conversation. But there was, there was definitely, there's community support for SROs in, at least in the Lebanon schools, and also, I think, just in a lot of our town.
There were some people who brought up some questions, when they described how he would interact with children on a daily basis. This is not the only point they brought up, they did bring up the discipline and the calling the officer, give, when there is someone who is having an episode, I guess is how I want to say it, and there was some questions around that, and there was a, a participant who said that her, she's an emergency nurse, and that her, what she has seen in the past, that was a handcuffed fifth grader coming into the law, with a police officer. So I'm not saying this, I just want to.
Yeah, well.
We asked about that, and I really do caution on that, I really think that our staff does need to make sure that they're trained. I know that they're trained, but make sure everybody knows that this must be the absolute last resort if this goes through, because I just don't think that's appropriate. I don't, I don't, I don't, I just have a lot of questions about that. I just don't want to see the child get hurt, there'd be a lot of ground that, because I know they're trained specially, but I just, I would like to have answer some questions about their training that they talked about in their meeting, to see what their training is with special needs, very special training for that, and what it is for just handling young, young women kids.
I'm, I'm just to speak to that quickly, in terms of that conversation, the woman who asked that question was an emergency nurse who has been, has experienced young children brought in with the police, and that is not some, so I, I think that the bottom line is, is that it does reflect the mental health crisis in our, in our country, and then back to the kids are, are being, unfortunately, the police are being utilized as that agency, basically, to move, you know, to get, get those help, which is a very different position than that, to be honest with you, because that was a typical police officer dealing with crisis at all. But, yes, and I think regardless, there's a huge amount of question about what training is provided, and there was a deputy there, also, we kind of talked about that a little bit. So I think, honest, that, so the biggest part of this is where is the spot for us as a district in terms of providing service specifically for Lebanon, and I think that was one of the big questions regarding Berwick and North Berwick, so we're struggling with that.
Sure. The selectmen were there?
Yes, some were, some were, yeah.
Did they contribute or comment?
That would be, I don't think so.
I don't think they did at all, I think they didn't, they didn't listen in here. So we don't get any sense of whether they are, they'd be willing to.
There was a question regarding whether or not the, this officer could be utilized specifically in Lebanon over the, the three months of the time when not in session, who was in session, and so that was the, I think, the only real question that they talked about, Sheriff King noted that that isn't an option, so, because it's, it's a, it's a, so it's a partnership with the sheriff's department and with the school district, so when the person is working for the sheriff's department, they need to be wherever their patrols are done, not necessarily specifically to Lebanon.
I wanted to, I just wanted to think on this one, I feel like I, I was a huge supporter of this, and one of the reasons why is because Lebanon doesn't have police by any time versus the other four elementary schools, and someone sent an email to the board and explained it. it in a way that really got me thinking and shared that it's not like, the other two towns have police officers or police forces. Lebanon doesn't, so why should that be district burdened? And then what I learned at that Tuesday meeting is that towns can have contracted officers through the sheriff's office. And after learning that, I would really like Lebanon to pursue that option first. And if they can't get anywhere, then like, I think this is great to revisit, but I don't ask. And this took me a while to get to your place. Don't want to consider part of our district. I want, all that gets to, you know, protect your, and I want all the teachers and kids to feel safe and everything, but knowing that this is something that Lebanon could pursue and to put them obviously in the playing field as the other two towns. I think I would like to feel that way first.
I just want to say, you do have sheriffs in town.
No, you can have a contracted. Who didn't know this?
They, they are in town.
Okay.
But, no, the difference, what she's saying, you do have a sheriff's officer in town.
Yes.
But they could also be patrolling three other towns. What she's talking about is they have a contracted officer that is dedicated to the town of Lebanon.
The point is, even if we had our own police department, we'd have to hire somebody else. So I don't think that's a viable excuse, whatever you want to call it.
But the other, the other elementary schools don't have kind of, because we have police.
However, they are available here to go to elementary schools because they're close. Lebanon's way over here. They're not going to get there in time. So it's just the way it is.
I think what Laura is saying, that if we front money for a school resource officer, the town of Lebanon shouldn't have to pay for a contracted dedicated officer to the town of Lebanon. And that means.
Well, I don't know they have one specific officer, because I have seen different ones, but they are there.
Yeah, they're, they're there, but they're on one other town. They don't have one that's set just to patrol the town of Lebanon.
Right, because they can, they can go to other towns when needed, and they bring up the fee for Lebanon without coverage. Whereas a contracted one means we have coverage all the time. That's where they stay.
But we do pay money to sheriffs.
Absolutely, we do. We can do the contracted, they did remember at the meeting. And we have in the past tried to contract. And it's been down. Just killing it down.
And this is more than one year? Or SRO?
Would be three.
So this is to remove the school resource officer from Lebanon from the budget, because it is reflected currently in the budget. Yes, all of this is hard. The next one is to remove the Noble Flex, the Noble Flex program. That's $259,000.
Yeah, so this is my, this is, this is super hard for me. The Noble Flex program was a pilot program that we, we actually have people work for somewhere.
We have this.
No, I meant the actual. Yes. So Noble Flex is a, was a pilot program that came out of the pandemic, and I think the kiddos talked about that really well. They did a nice job tonight. Oh, sorry, the mic, the mic. But we have known all along that the numbers are very low, and the student impact, although great for those individual kiddos, it's a, it is a large budget chunk that we are feeling, we need to be thinking about in terms of, when we're looking at all the other pieces across the district that we need to take care of. So we had a variety of students that were supported. We had, you know, and our numbers were in the, in the early stages when we first opened the program. We had twenty-two to twenty-six kiddos in the first two years. This year, the numbers are quite, quite a bit lower. Also, from that timeframe, the, the high school actually did develop a virtual program that sort of took care of that next iteration of kiddos that were graduating, grew out of the five-three program going into ninth grade. So we do have students that are, we have, I think, six eighth graders that are going into the high school, and they're going to go straight into the program that AJ developed up there. This is a continuation of us. So here's my thing. I will work diligently until I get this back. So my, my, my feeling about this is that I would like to press pause. We have about, we only have about, truly about six kiddos that are currently in that we're going to continue for next year. We have, we have fourteen students who are on the potential application list, who are interested. But until I know that, that the balance is there financially for students and for the number of staff necessary, I feel like I need, I feel like I responsibly need, and this is killing me, just, so you know, just to press pause and say, I have to find a grid in order to continue. That it can't, it's a, from the fact that it's right now. So that's where I'm at. As you saw, it is a great program. It really does fit a niche group of kids that really are probably your, some of your highest flyers in terms of, of the world, in terms of like the, the interest levels that they have. I'm hopeful that we will not have them return completely at home schooling. There is options for like being able to utilize a hybrid model, actually, for homeschooling, also using public school as well, until I can figure out how to come back because that's where I'm at. It doesn't feel good. I don't like it.
So, so you're saying possibly for next year, there's six moving on, maybe fourteen come in, so roughly you might have twenty?
But that's, but I, I am not able to confirm that.
Oh, I know.
So I'm not, I just feel like I need to be put this forward.
Because even twenty, if they can get twenty kids, that's almost $13,000 per kid if you divide that, which if you look on here, that's what we're at for the enrollment. I remember the kids in everywhere else. Right?
It is, it's the same, it is, like, it is, you're right.
Are there, are there potentially students that, are there students that don't know about this? I, I'm looking at this in the students who voted tonight, and I think this is the answer to a lot. I know more to my kids had. I would have taken advantage of that in heartbeats. And if we take that away from some of those students?
Yeah, I, I feel like I, our, our flex group, the kids themselves, the parents, the staff have been really pushing this out there, trying to get, they utilize social media. They, they really have tried to drum up applications and, and to make this truly viable. I, I cannot say anything except for how impressed I am with the group. It's just the question of how do I, how do we balance this carefully? So we're not going to stop trying, like, we, it's March, right? But I need to be, I need to be honest that, you know, I'm not sure that I can garner enough students in order to make this a viable option.
What is making us team the flex program?
We, you remember, like, twenty-six, I think we've had, which is a really good group. And what happens is we have two learning coaches who are working with those kids, but you have to release the NIT and the AICL. But it's a wide range of students and a wide range of ages. So that's more than you, that's plenty. That's plenty.
I know in the past, we kind of had some discussions around experiencing this possible. So.
And we have a year?
I do here.
We have, yeah, we have. And we do have a couple of students on the list that are from AWEN, with, in terms of that are on the application list. But we, like, we're, there's not yet to follow through with them.
Can we give them at some point a little bit more information about what is going on at the high school for the program that they're doing there at some point?
Sure, we'll make AJ do that.
Yeah, we'll be kind.
You wanted to know?
I'm willing to.
It's not, it's a, it's a different program.
Incredibly different, honestly. Full, I, and full disclosure, it is very, very different. And from an age perspective, it works okay, because we're not dealing with that, I would say, very sort of delicate age of fifth to eighth graders. So it, it is very different. We are able to, and I think the other difference is, and we back up, we need to be able to offer high school credit. So that is a difference. So, you know, we're beholden to the, you know, MSAT sixty graduation requirements, so helping students to work through those. Our program is almost exclusively online. So as the kiddos and, and coaches talked about at the year, they're able to be in-person two days a week. We are, from a learning perspective, online four-day event. We are online all five days. We do offer a one-in-person day, so while our staff is doing their late start Wednesday professional development, Amber was actually gracious enough to come over with our students at the beginning of the year who were working in that remote program. That allowed them access to school counselors when thinking about future plans, what you might want to do, access to our ELO coordinator to be, what, how can we get you out into the community in a meaningful fashion? So for example, beginning of the year, because of the connection that the folks have with the flex program, the students who wanted, we do make that in-person optional, because again, we have seventeen-year-olds that are working fifteen hours a week. They're like, I don't need to come into school on Wednesday morning. I just want to do the school part. And that was okay. We don't require it at that point. We try and make it make sense. But a lot of the students, especially the younger ones, it is really helpful to have that personal connection, because some of the kiddos may be home predominantly by themselves during the day. So our classes, and this is where it gets a little bit tricky, so sort of bear with me, but courses are online. We have a live teacher available. So for example, math for all of our virtual kiddos happens day one, block four, because it has to fit within the Noble High School schedule. So it happens from one to two twenty-five on Mondays and Thursdays. Students log in, their teacher is there, but students in grades nine through twelve are there. So they're not able to teach live lessons. So when you think of something like a virtual academy, the Main Connections Academy or one of those programs, they may have fifty, a hundred or more students taking Algebra One in that program. We don't have that. We have maybe five students taking Algebra One, four taking geometry, three doing Algebra Two, and, you know, two in pre-calc, four in a senior math course. So they're very much spread out. So what happens, the first fifteen minutes or so with every class is a, is a sort of live lesson that everyone can do. So in math, it focuses a lot on probability and statistics. Let's look at statistics. Let's do something meaningful with math. Then the students go off and break out to work on. And we have an online learning program called PlayCo that students log into. It's put out, you know, like, one of the education online programs. Students go on to and work. Teacher is there. Teacher stays online with them for the whole block, checks in and break out rooms on Google meets, things like that. If you look at an English course, they're reading a novel, but again, the bulk of the work, you know, and sort of the meeting of our standards, the meeting of our expectations are happening through that online program. And we go ahead and supplement. One thing we have learned with this being the first year is, like, in things like science, we need to add way more lab opportunities, because that was something that was missing for students. You can't, you know, reading about and answering questions about science is not sufficient. So we're going to be able to add to that. Like, you know, it's going to be tricky. I think the one advantage that we have with those students for our teachers that are teaching in that program, they're not full-time in that program. It is their one block of their, of their overall teaching responsibility. So we don't have any staff that are fully dedicated to that program. Our science teacher is our biology teacher. Her fifth class, you know, we have, one teacher teaches marine biology with their fifth class, one teaches A D biology. She teaches virtual pathway science. So again, it's not able to dive into the depths. I think the advantage is that we have is as students get older, we're able to help them access early college opportunities, things of that nature. So I think in our perfect world, those students aren't necessarily doing four years with us, logging in with the same teacher for all of their core subjects. Our hope is for their, you know, junior and senior history, they're accessing York County Community College, maybe online, in one of their online classes. I think my hope for a lot of them would be to get in-person to do those courses. And we try and build up to that and build successful opportunities. But, so we're not able to replicate that piece. We just don't, we don't have the full-time staff available. And so we're, we are very much piecemeal. But we are able to help students who life situation, working with the family, helping them access their education when otherwise it would be difficult. You know, it's sort of a lot, but certainly any questions that you have or things that you're thinking about, you know, we do offer, and then sort of that piece we've learned as we go along, like, needing that health requirement, needing that world language graduation requirement, like, things like senior project, which is a class that all of our students take that is a research class, a topic of their choice. It's like, ooh, that is really hard. So like, as we're building this, and we're still building it, and there will be some certain improvements for next year, some things that were like, that was great, that worked really well, and other things. For example, I spoke about like the science labs. We really need a lot more of that.
All of our, figure, how many kids are accessing, students are accessing this?
We have twenty to twenty-two, twenty-three, in that ballpark, low twenties. And there's a little bit in and out. We have some students that will transition back. I think that is one of the pieces with using the online platform we use. It does allow, because we're tracking student standards, it does allow students to come back in to class. It's, it's not perfect, certainly, like, we're not guaranteeing they're reading the same books at the same time. But with some notice, you know, a lot of times, like, hey, at the semester break, if you want to make a change, we can do that. So it does allow for some on-ramps and off-ramps.
So what's the typical turn time for getting a grant? Are you looking at six months a year?
Yes and yes. Okay. So I mean, we're just going to look for appropriate cases that work. One of the, the whole, a big part of this program was developed with Anne Dixon, who is our school health coordinator, in conjunction with Bridgette Dumont. That was how it all started with us. And so we were just able to find funds to support it.
So I'm looking at the strategic plan, the idea to, to begin with this, and I was at those sessions. So I'm thinking as we go through these things, and I'm considering the concerns that our community members voiced at those meetings, so the school safety one, I'm sad about that. But this one too, this is a multiple path. And it's strong. What else will we offer that supports that part of our strategic plan?
And I don't have a great answer for that, except for the work that our elementary and middle schools do to try to connect with students individually through a variety of different, our specialists and our, and our counselors and our teachers who are really fabulous. But it is true, that this is a very unique opportunity for students to find their, find their people. So now that you said that, I would say collectively, as we go through these, we should be aware.
Yes.
Because we're all of them, we just sort of step down the work that we ask community members to do.
Yes.
And what we believe in our hearts, right?
Absolutely.
And that's what we're here as educators for a reason. And so this is why this is the hardest time with the B of.
It was really neat. First of all, all those that presented talked about flex. That was, that was really awesome to hear. Just a niche that I feel. It made me think, the whole time I was listening to it, made me think of, I think it's the current day version of a one-room schoolhouse. And a one-room schoolhouse is more incredible, the fact. And, and they were overflowing with, with students. And I think, you know, one of the things I am excited about in this district is that we are willing to be innovative and try new things. I mean, that's, that's great. I mean, that's, that's great, and we shouldn't lose sight of that. I think that's wonderful. But I also think it's incumbent upon one members to review, to ask administration to review programs. And, and we need to acknowledge that it's not, it's not, um, viable at a certain point. And I do encourage our administration to continue to figure out how this can be done. Say, one-room schoolhouse, I'm all for, that's awesome. But it's just, it's just not there right now. And I think the point we acknowledge that. It's not to, it's not to dismiss the effort that was done and the work that has been done, certainly the work we've accomplished aboard at other meetings. Um, definitely certainly was the work that has been created. Um, it flows out, right? And it becomes integrated throughout all our schools and our students' experiences. Um, so I think it was a success in large part, a lot of ways. But it's important to look at all facets and constantly review things. I just think that balanced approach is important.
Any further questions, comments, any further information needed? Okay, so now the straw pool is to remove no flex from the budget.
Amber, we didn't find another day. For now. But thank you. Oh my gosh, yeah. Okay, I'm still looking here, yes. Thank you.
So this next, um, item is a continuation from the discussion last week. Um, and that is to consolidate the K five specialist at North Berwick Elementary School. That's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. When we presented the schedule last week, we had it by classroom versus by specialist. So we, um, had a teach, um, the school administrators come back with the current schedules and then what it would look like when consolidated. So for example, the first page, um, is STEAM, so North Berwick Elementary School has STEAM. And then underneath that is Milton School. So those are the current sections. And then to the right is the proposed schedule with it consolidated. And as our specialists have said, and which I believe all of our administrators would agree on, is that while the places may open, they are certainly busy. Um, what we are reflecting here is when it says a grade two class, that's a class. So that's the special. That's the time that the entire class goes in. There is a misconception, I believe, at least from what I heard this evening, is that we're trying, like, the misconception about cutting specials, that is not, that's not the discussion. Every student would still receive the same amount of specials that they have this year, that they had last year. Um, this is, is, as I said last week, this is to write the changes that we've made based on enrollment in class sections going down in schools. So that we are fully utilizing, um, our time. And I'm not, again, I'm not saying that it's not being utilized, it is. But there's a difference between the spec, just the difference between sections in different buildings. We haven't caught up to some of that, and this is more equitable. So again, it's not to cut a special for a class of students.
So it's two positions, or what is it?
It's three. So it would be STEAM, library, P.E., I want to say there's, music, we weren't, music because of the band is complicated, so it was not, it was not the end. So art, that's one.
Yeah, art.
Yeah.
So looking at this, it does say right now that those instructors have duties? And when you post-schedule, it says, does not include the duties? But will teachers have to pick up more duties?
Where do you put the duties though?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So will the teachers?
So, yeah, so do you want to, Principal Jolly is coming to speak, just to the duty part?
Just lower this microphone. If you're referring to the, the blue box that says D free lunch, that's their duty free lunch. For the duties, right now, because there's the openings in the schedules, our specialists do fill a lot of the duties. So yes, the teachers would have to most likely, I don't know, like, pick up some of the duties. But there still is some flexibility in the schedules. So if you're looking at the STEAM block, um, when I did, looking at Tuesday, eight, ten to nine is open. So the STEAM teacher would likely do a duty there, a morning duty. Continuing on Tuesday, if you go down a few rows in the blocks, you'll see eleven forty-five to one o'clock open, that's during our lunch block. So I would have the STEAM teacher support, um, a duty during lunch recess at that time as well. So even, um, even with the consolidation of, of both schools, there still would be opportunities each day for the specialists to support duties around the building.
So one of the proposed changes I'm seeing, it actually appears to be a violation of Maine law. And the, if you work six consecutive hours, you're required to have a thirty-minute break. You're only given a twenty-minute break.
So wait, by, by, by staff contract, yes, twenty minutes, twenty of each contract. Which is only fifteen, by the way, by the time we get to K five.
Yeah, you don't necessarily give one of the possible, but.
That's what, that's what everybody currently has.
That's a good point, that, because that's a employer, so one year, I could get that.
Correct.
But we can do that, is it your contract?
It's right there, contract.
I know, but how do you write a contract? It's not like, it's like really.
If it's against Maine law, would I have to pull up right now? So, I would might want to get it out a little further.
You should look into that.
Well, I, I can't imagine at this point it's been that way forever, that somebody could run against you in law.
Um, a lot of the special teachers share about like the extras they do and the kids that they help during these open times and how they realize, like, how is, they're taken away from that? How's that going to impact a large group of kids that issue schools?
So we can have the principals talk about that. Before they, they speak to that, what I'd like to say is, this is where some of that capability comes in right now. Because what is afforded at one of the schools, because the, the numbers of classes is less than another school, those schools don't have the same opportunities for that. And so we're not necessarily, like, it's, it's a push and pull. It's a really hard thing. Um, so I'm going to ask, again, Principal Jolly and Principal Keniston to come up and just speak a little bit to that.
Yes, certainly. And I, it is important to note, this is a very tough budget season, and this discussion isn't easy either, because I love my staff and it's wonderful to have them here in the capacity that we have. However, I'm recognizing that, you know, there's a lot of big things on the table. We have a lot of really important decisions that impact students really drastically. Um, so I kept that in mind as we talked about what this could look like and recognize the pros and the cons of it. And moving forward this year, we've been grateful that we've been able to offer some clubs to students, um, given the free time and the schedule that, that has been there. Um, our specialists do different things, like the check-in, checkout system for students. But I also know that they are phenomenally dedicated people. And on the days that they will come to the building if this moves forward, they're going to give a hundred and fifty percent like they currently do. And the North Berwick staff is truly one of the most committed and wonderful staff I've ever had the privilege of working with. So I also feel very confident that if this was something that was approved, you would still see positivity come through every day in the building. You would see the staff continue to rise up and fill any gaps exist, because they do do that. We are not an overly stacked school, um, and every day I see members of, of our team go above and beyond. So I feel confident that they would continue to do that. With the flexibility that's there, this is just a draft. So, you know, if, if this was something that you, that you decided to move forward, like, I would sit down and really confidently look at what the schedule looks like and see if there was still an opportunity to provide some clubs. A big vision I do have is I would love for one day a week, each grade level had an open block, where they'd be able to go do a club with one of the specialists. I don't know if that would be feasible just yet, but once I know what next year will look like, I'll try to be creative and make that happen, at least for some of the upper grades. So it would be a little different, but I feel confident that I can be creative in North Berwick, still provide some of those opportunities.
I think. Yeah, so, uh, feels very much like, like, I, I don't know if people know that I became principal right behind Elba. I think the, the same is true. Um, we do, there are a ton of things that happen at Milton School that happen every day, some of which, you know, people know about, some of which I find out even afterwards. You know, you may go think that the art room is free and find that there's an entire class working on a project that is really a classroom-based project, but has brought in an art component. Um, I know this afternoon, there was a class that was going out with our P.E. teacher for an extra time. Those are things that happen because people are in the building. Um, that wouldn't happen in that way, organically, if we're looking at two days a week. Um, but again, we were, we were asked to look really hard at what we have and how we're using people. Um, I know you were asked last week if there were ways that we could, you know, on paper, I think, maybe people's schedules more true to what they are, or really showcase what they're doing. Um, certainly we can do that. But if we're looking at budgetary, at least, something needs to happen. Again, like Liz said, um, I don't ever build a building schedule in my office by myself the way I built this to see if it would happen. Um, so certainly a scheduling team would come together and really look at what would make sense to our, our building. Um, and just one clarification, the consolidations would be a P.E., an art. And then we have this interesting position where Milton has one person doing STEAM and library. Um, and supplement that with the art teacher. So the kids see the art teacher and the STEAM teacher three times every two weeks. Small schools, kind of weird things happen like that. So the other position would be a STEAM position. So we'd share a librarian in both buildings, share a STEAM teacher in both buildings. So those are the three positions. P.E., art, and STEAM.
Would kids still have access to the libraries when the new libraries weren't there?
Um, the way that it currently works is Milton students go to library once every other week, and then we set up open library times.
There's also inter-year loan bonds that are available, like four clubs, if, if any staff is, is interested in running activities after school or throughout different parts, like.
Yeah, and that's not specific to special. Milton right now is, uh, like, on Thursdays, today, we had, um, I with three other staff members run a cooking club after school, we had a finger boarding club, and we had a chess club, all happened this afternoon. Um, those are things that our staff across does. Every time a kid says, can we do this, someone seems to say, yes, we can, which is exciting.
Any further questions?
For the P.E. schedule? I know we're busy and if it's on here in a different way than not realizing, um, we did one. We put a link for like play into all that and.
Our link for like is done by our OTPT.
Say that again?
That's done by our OTPT and our specialized staff.
Okay. Or at least the gym teacher involved. I don't know if this is in our program, but I know that's good case, and I don't see that reflected here.
Currently ours happens on Friday when our P.E. teacher is at her.
And you schedule ours based off of OTPT schedules? So I wouldn't know that just yet.
Any further questions? Okay, so the straw pool is to consolidate K five specialist, North Berwick and Milton School, that would be art, P.E., and STEAM.
And North Berwick and Milton have luxuries that the only other elementary schools don't have. Is that what we're saying, though? Our job?
That is correct.
And, and we're not going to vote to, to make it even across the district?
I'm going to argue that it's on paper, not equitable, but I think what's actually happening at the schools is a completely different story. Um, and also, I heard from a lot of parents who have straight-up said, if the money is going to people, they don't care what the person is. If it is going to the people in our buildings, they don't care. So that's also my suggestion, kind of passport, and not share here, and it's my idea.
Can we come back to?
Yeah.
I just think it's an aggravation. I mean, that's, this is an aggravation.
So you'd like to discuss this next week? Is that, just to think about it? Okay. Okay, the next one is remove M.L.L. educational technician, that's forty thousand eight hundred dollars. This is a position that is not currently filled. So this was a new addition, um, to the proposed budget. And what we have found is that we are going to be able to cover that with some staff that's currently in the building. At the high school and at the middle school.
Quick, right. Well, you need to take a straw poll.
Yes. You needed to use your point. But yes, not that anything is, not that all of this.
Yeah.
So the straw poll to remove the M.L.L. educational technician. The next one is the, to remove an educational technician two from North Berwick Elementary School, that's forty-nine thousand four hundred fifty dollars. Um, the recommendation is to remove this position because in talking with Principal Jolly, um, there is a way to rework some of the educational technicians in the building so that this, um, focus on behavior intervention can occur. So that is the recommendation. This was a new position within the budget, so it's not filled this position as, as written. So that's the recommendation. Is there any question or, um, further information needed for Principal Jolly? Okay? The straw poll is to remove the educational technician from North Berwick Elementary School. The following, um, is the restructuring of the C.E.C., which is the, um, community agent coordinator and the transitional educational technician three. So that's forty-four thousand five hundred dollars. That is currently in the budget. We are seeking to remove that position because we have an open position, um, that we are going to, again, restructure so that the same kinds of work can occur, just with a different, um, figure, because that position is currently unbuilt.
Sure, I mean, yeah, basically, we have been racking our brains trying to pull some funds together to make sure that, something for you guys to actually be able to, you know, be able to cut without feeling horrible about. And the reality is that we just had the community agent center person and the transitions instructor, Jessica Gass, have worked well together already. Jessica has an ed tech opening that has not been built, and Rebecca is willing to be that person. So it's just, uh, it works out great, she'll still be able to do the, the general work that she's doing, but now we'll also.
She'll still be able to do the general work that she's doing, but now we'll also do some more specific work with Special Education. It's a big deal.
Any questions, further information needed? Okay, so the straw poll is to restructure the CEC Transitional Educational Technician to remove $44,500 out of the budget. The following is to reduce the Teaching and Learning Consultant line in the Teaching and Learning Budget. Typically, we have a placeholder for consultants so that if we're working with schools throughout the year and something comes up where there may need to be some assistance with, you know, any kind of curriculum work, social studies, could be behavior, a multitude of things, that line in the budget is for those types of items. So we are proposing to reduce that by $15,000. Any questions, further information needed?
So does that totally eliminate funding for any kind of emergency or respite?
No, schools do have money in their budgets themselves, about professional development, that we've worked, you know, through with them to make sure that that was adequate, and there is still some money in the Teaching and Learning Budget should something come up. Okay, yes. Thank you. Any further questions, comments?
Do we currently, do we have any consultants currently about a district, like on an annual basis?
We do have consultants, yeah. We do have, as we talked about, there's some in special land, there's some that are currently in the school budget.
I mean, I guess not really, but it is related. I don't, I'm trying to remember where I saw them in the budget, so maybe we'll get some follow-up on that. Where are those consultants located on budgets or budgetary?
Yeah, so when we go through some of this, it'll come up.
Thank you.
Sure. Questions, comments? Okay, so the straw poll is to reduce the Teaching and Learning Consulting line in the budget by $15,000. The next one is to remove the District Health Coordinator local portion only, that's $44,800.
Yeah, okay. So this is, uh, this is an unmarked, honestly. So it actually didn't pop up until it was questioned, I think, added to the sheet last week. So, but I'm taking the due diligence, we looked at it carefully, I've talked to Erin about it. We, so the past, we've had a health coordinator in the district since 2001, and it has been one of those things that's helped us align curriculum well, but really, the bulk of her time has been spent on preventative, you know, measures in terms of working with students and access to some use, tobacco, those kind of things. She's pulled in the district in the time that she's been with us well over, close to a million dollars' worth of grant funding. So it's an important role because she spends her time also looking and looking for resources for the district as well. We did discuss cutting, she's currently 50% of the time in our district, and we talked about putting that to 25% of her time in the district so that we could continue the preventative measures piece, particularly around vaping right now, because it's incredible that what's been happening in the art culture. And we're going to, my other piece of that is that we will work diligently to fund her other 25% through an outside grant. Working right now is Betsy Kelly, who's part of the Coalition, Save the Turkey Schools in the area, and hoping that she might be able to supplement us so that we can continue her truly 50% timeframe, but 25% from us. And what you see here, that $44,800 is, also includes, it's not just her salary, but it's also her life, her, you know, supplies and PD and stuff like that. So that's where that is... I don't know. It's a hard one, but again, it's that whole piece of, I feel pretty strongly that I can find this in an outside fund to support it. Because Erin's been involved in what she's brought to the district.
So are you saying that we're going to remove the L line totally, or are we going to reduce it by 50%?
We're going to reduce it by 50%, but the, so, but the local portion is going to be removed. She is funded through Title V right now, which is part of our ESEA grants. So it's about $18,000 or something that's in that portion of budget. So I will be talking as we rewrite our ESEA application for next year that we might fund a little bit more in the, just to make sure that 25% is covered. Okay?
Thank you.
Does that make sense? Well, in theory, I should be able to find coverage through an outside grant, but I have been very frank with Erin that I can only guarantee 25%.
We wouldn't want to lose.
Right, yeah.
There's that, which is a really big deal, a big concern in community. But also, for that $44,800, we're going to give up and potentially lose the time she has to write going to go to bring.
And there is that. I mean, it is, that's, it's, it's all there, because time is huge, right? Being able to write quizzes, that's what we do.
Yeah, 25% of time.
But I wanted to at least put forward, because it has been brought forward in terms of the questioning of it, and I recognize that, and I think it's something that needed to be considered.
Any further questions, comments?
Yeah, so when would you know whether that can be covered in the grant?
So Betsy and I chatted the other day, and she's looking at her budget process in early, mid-April. All of the rapid things I've probably given the date of, but in the meantime, I'll still be digging around for other things.
Okay, so the straw poll is to remove the District Health Coordinator local portion only, for $44,800. Are we ready to move on, or do we need a little break? Or are you ready to move on to the next section?
10:30, we gotta do a little break.
Do you have a mouse for all of these?
We have information.
Okay.
We're moving on to the next section. So if we had, the administrative recommended reductions, if we had gone to remove all of those, and that had been called to remove, that would have brought the total down to 6.63%.
What, 4.73%?
Yeah, but...
Not yet, that's a number. Given the votes on these projects here, what it does is it brings a revised increase to taxpayers to $2,64,273, which is a 9.05% increase to debt.
Give me the number again.
Yes, $2,064,273, which is 9.05%.
Great.
And that includes pulling 1.6 million out of the designated reserve funds, correct?
It includes pulling 1.6 million using the backer fund balance, and was also using the $379,000 that was paid by efficiency name in '24.
Before we move on to this list, this is the list that was just generated for further information from some board members. This was, again, representative of every board member, and it wasn't, you know, meaning to put this on the cut list, this was to gather more information. Before we move into this phase, I have to recognize our administrative team for this because this documents, these documents took hours and hours and hours of time to gather and collect and just write up. And as we go through it, we'll see the work that went into this. So it is amazing, we also had a lot of staff input when we were asking for things. We've been working on this since Friday morning last week, right after the board meeting, and we stopped five minutes before, before we walked in.
6:15.
Okay, okay. So I just have a lot of gratitude for our administrators and our staff that helped to pull this all together. In four E's, and just looking at this document, these were exactly taken off of that Google Doc. So Assistant Athletic Director, School Health Coordinator, Positive Behavioral Intervention Support, Interventions and Support. All of the supporting documents are on here, but due to the time, due to the fact that we've got to get this done by, you know, next week and the week after, what we've done is we've compiled highlights for you that we are going to read off. And then there are supporting information packets behind all the highlights. So again, some of these may be easier than others. So when we open it up for discussion, we can talk about if you want to go into the straw poll or not. Again, some of these are like, somewhat in the fact that it's straightforward. I don't mean an easy cut, I just mean it's like straightforward with data, straightforward with everything. So we're going to start with the, Sue and I are submitting it based on how we compile the information. So we're going to start with the highlights of the Assistant Athletic Director. So as you can see, next to that highlight, that's the first document, there is $68,000. That is what is in the budget for this position. And on each highlight page at the bottom, after we go through the polluted items that we wanted to highlight, we, we, meaning our administrative team, the central office, we have a recommendation. And that's just for ease of just going through the process. So the highlights of the Assistant Athletic Director, and I am sorry that I'm going to read through some of these, but just again, we want to get through as much as we can this evening. If we need to bring some board back next week, that's perfectly fine, but we just want to get it all out there. So the Assistant Athletic Director provides coverage, crowd management, and ensures the safety of all players, coaches, and officials for all home contests at Noble Middle School, and supports large events at Noble High School. So 100 middle school events and 25 to 30 Noble High School events. This includes tournaments, regional and state championship events at Noble. Hires and evaluates 32 coaches, 10 volunteer coaches for 24 teams and programs each year. Holds preseason coaches meetings and attends practices to evaluate coaches, athletic fields and spaces, meets with parents and coaching staff as necessary if and when concerns arise. Enforces policies and procedures for student eligibility, and this occurs daily. Coordinates with the district facilities director for regular field maintenance, painting and game lines, stringing nets, removing natural debris, lining fields when the maintenance staff is unavailable. Attends monthly Southern Maine Middle School Athletic Conference meetings and serves as the point person for cross-country and boys and girls lacrosse. This includes creating the master schedule and updating league bylaws for 27 member schools. The recommendation of the administration is to continue this position for 2025. Questions, further information, discussion?
How many meetings do you have for the Athletic Conference? Erin, do you want to answer my question?
Amazing times. How many meetings?
Yeah.
Each time?
Excuse me, I was still on the comp from a couple of weeks ago that we had at our board workshop. Certainly, there is this. I feel like I'm eating. Thanks, Liz, appreciate it. Yeah, so the middle school assistant athletic director attends monthly meetings for each other main school athletic conference, which begins in September and runs all the way to the end of the school year in June. As a former middle school athletic director, assistant athletic director, athletic director, and high school athletic director currently, I attend similar meetings with the SMAA, which is the South Western Maine Activities Association. At those meetings, we discuss kind of day-to-day operations of what we need to do for all of our sports, individual sport liaisons, again, Alex, the assistant athletic director, as Padra, a little too, creates the master schedule for boys and girls lacrosse, and across country. So that's kind of what those meetings entail. It's a lot of business discussion, talking about financials of the league, talking about what each board needs, each liaison kind of advocates for that individual sport for the 27 member schools.
And how much, what's a month, it's how much time?
Typically, it depends. Meetings typically last between two, two and a half hours, up to a Scarborough.
Further questions for Erin?
Thank you.
Thank you. So behind the highlights document that I've just read is more detailed information. If you need that, or if you want to move into a straw poll, you can do that. It's really, this is your discussion, this is your time now to talk through some of this.
Is there, can, just because it's 10:30 at night?
Yes.
Can we go through this and then either straw poll next week, or will we have time?
That's fine.
Do you need this for that? I mean, if the administration spent hours making this, I'd rather give it to you in advance.
Yep, that's fine. Is everybody okay with that? Let me just give an overview now, and next week we will come back in four blocks.
Are we going to start over?
Maybe? Okay. We'll do the next one.
Yeah, we're going to do it. So the District Health Coordinator, we're already done over, and we'll move on to the next one.
The next one is the third one, highlights Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, PBIS, $18,800. Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports is an evidence-based framework for creating safe, positive, equitable schools where every student can feel valued, connected to the school community, and supported by caring adults. 2425, we're in the second year of implementation for North Berwick Elementary, Puzzi School, Hanson and Lemonade Elementary Schools. It'll be year three of implementation for Noble School. School teams receive ongoing training and in turn bring training back to the school buildings for practical application. You can see some of the school-wide focuses of professional development, common documents. There's an example here of the Noble School behavioral flow chart. And at the bottom of this is the school board PBIS presentation that was done at Noble School when we were visiting Noble School earlier in the year. And that's a link if you want to go back and just get a reminder of those pieces. The recommendation is to continue this school-wide model for 25. Professional learning communities is the next one, that's $28,500. A PLC, or Professional Learning Communities, focuses to improve instructional practices and student learning outcomes. It's a professional learning model where educators routinely to share and critically analyze the professional practices in a manner that is reflective, learning-centered, and growth-oriented. So again, there's a document on the back that kind of goes through the responsibilities, what's happening in each of the elementary schools. The recommendation is to continue the Professional Learning Communities for 25. Staff stipends?
I'm a little lost in like, I'm lost in my thing here. Okay, so one of the suggestions was just the review of all staff stipends. I wasn't really quite sure exactly what to do with that, because there's a lot. So, but the reality is, is this is a contractual issue. The language that is including our teacher contract, I've put down through here so you understand it, but basically, it's, we have to review the stipends on an annual basis. We make decisions with our administrative crew about which stipends are going to stay in place for the following year, and then we also work with our union on that as well. So it's a contractual issue, and it's a relationship that we work through. And we do not, these are reviewed annually so that we don't continue things if they're not necessarily going to be used. And we may fund to a different area with the support of the union so that, you know, we address those. They are based on... They are based on, it used to be based on the base salary. Now they are basically an incremental increase on an yearly basis. It's a one point three, oh, it's one point five increase. So that is that. In our world, I mean, we just continue with those administrative uses stipends on an annual basis. Oh, and then, here's the next one. Thank you for finding this one. All right. The other, this one was kind of making, this is a question that really came forward about closing Mary Margaret County. They got, I believe, came from the reality that the state does reimburse us for funds over and above a forty thousand dollar out of district placement. So as we look at this, I just want to break it down to the extent I did it mathematically only. There's a philosophical piece that is attached to MHA as well, but just in terms of funding. So tuition costs can range from anywhere from thirty thousand dollars to a hundred and forty thousand dollars per school year, per student. Tuition costs above forty thousand are currently reimbursed to the district by the state. For example, the tuition for Maplestone in Acton is three sixty nine per day at hundred and eighty days, which I just took for typical school year, some are less than more. That cost per year for tuition is sixty six thousand four twenty. The state would then currently reimburse us the twenty six four twenty over the forty thousand dollars. Note, very, very important note, numbers of the Maine United Special Services Department have indicated to our illustrious business manager, Dennis Van Campen, that this may change and/or be eliminated in the future. So that is a concern to be thinking about. Continuing with the Maplestone example, this sixty six thousand four twenty does not include special services provided as noted in the student's IET. Those would include OT, PT, speech counseling, behavioral compromise, et cetera. Those are services above and beyond the tuition and therefore those would not be reimbursed to the district. Those would be borne by the district. The other piece that's down at the bottom that I forgot to put in, this also doesn't include transportation. The transportation costs for our district placements are high and difficult to actually find the rest. The other part that is important to note is that there are not a lot of out-of-district programs currently that are not full and have wait lists. And so therefore you have students that may not be being served and would be probably placed on like a tutoring program, which is not long-term viable or legal. So I have to think about that. Those are, those are the important.
And it is the recommendation to continue these positions for school year twenty five. Okay, so next steps on next week for Thursday. So we just presented the information, review this information. We'll come back on Thursday to talk through this some more to help me do the recommendations prior to that. So the question is, we've got a lot to do, you know, there's still a lot to do. Do we want to, are you able to begin earlier than seven o'clock? And I'm going to give you the cabinet first to say that we need an edit to the rescheduled expulsion hearing to see if there is availability for Tuesday for the expulsion hearing. Tuesday, yes, Tuesday at six thirty. Do we need more?
I can give it.
Okay. Okay.
The Green Garden, that's a great idea. You want, sorry? No.
Oh, you're going to be the, you're.
So is it possible to get five people here for Tuesday?
The twenty sixth at what time?
Six thirty. So then Thursday for the workshop, it's just going to be a, no, we're going to have to have a little meeting before because we need to bring some contracts forward. It's a due date for contracts. So very brief meeting and then the workshop. Availability to start prior to seven? Six thirty, six thirty or six? Six thirty?
Okay.
We'll send this out tomorrow. So six thirty Tuesday and Thursday. Thank you, everybody in the audience.